President.
No, no one, no one said anything, Brian.
Oh, I thought you said, okay. It's not even me. I'm sorry. I was, I was a present.
Um, we can only see half your face, by the way. There we go. Looks like you've been. There we go. How's that? Is that better? Good, good.
Much better.
Alright.
Can you hear it, Nan? Yes, yes. Um, darling.
Tom, can you hear it, Nan? Yep, yes.
Yeah, no call, yes.
Kind of echoing here, this is not a good connection for me. Well, there's two for you. You have two, we're in the news.
Uh, I can, I can get rid of that other one if you want.
Can you not, can you not the, um, the one without the?
Hopefully this is what I want.
Better?
One minute, I gotta call these guys.
But Tom, there's only one of you now. Yeah?
I'm back.
Yes.
There we go. Alright. Alright.
One call? Yes?
Alright, we did a roll call for the members of the committee, is that where we're at? No, we haven't done anything. Be ready. Alright, we all said, sorry for the delay, everyone. Everyone, everyone is here for what we're gonna say, right? If everyone could, um, if everyone could mute their, uh, while I get started. Their computers and their, uh, phones. Alright, great. Uh, again, uh, ready to start the, um, 12th regular meeting of the Lynn School Committee, uh, Thursday, June 25th, 2020. Uh, I want to welcome everyone, as a preliminary matter, we will confirm attendance. Uh, Nan, uh, we're gonna go into the roll call now, could you please confirm that all the members are listening? Anticipated on the agenda, the president can hear us. He can start with the, please.
Mr. Cassius Harris?
President.
Ms. Capola?
President.
President.
Ms. Gately? Yes. Uh, Ms. Gately? And Mr. Nicholson?
President.
Mr. Satterwhite?
President. President. And could you also, um, do a roll call on the others that are on, uh, at the meeting with us, please?
Uh, Dr. Tuttwiler?
President.
Ms. Powers? Ms. Regal? Ms. Regal?
President.
Mr. McHugh?
President.
Mr. Myhouse?
President.
And Mary Jewels?
President.
I just said.
Okay, um, uh, again, this is me, Tom McGee, I'd like to say good evening and thank you for joining us. This open meeting of the Lynn School Committee is being conducted, uh, remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, uh, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth, and due to the out, due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. Uh, in order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed, uh, by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical locations. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate, participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting on the city website allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public asset, access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lynn School Department is convened by telephone conference, video conference, via the GoToMeeting platform as posted on the city's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded, that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that the other people may be able to see you and to take care, not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by that recording. Uh, the ground rules for the meeting, uh, we are turning to the, uh, first, uh, item on the agenda, but before that, uh, I want to cover the ground rules for effective and clear conduct of business, and to, to ensure accurate minute, meeting minutes. As chairman, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda, and after they conclude their remarks, I go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Uh, please hold until your name is called. Please remember to mooch, excuse me, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. Members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the chair. Taking care to identify yourselves. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call. With that, we are ready to go into the meeting, I do have a flag behind me that I will try and share. Um, it's, uh, and I will ask everyone to stand and join me in a salute to the flag of the United States. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Flags of America, and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Uh, you may be seated.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Um, I like to make a motion to change a, a thing or two, uh, in the schedule that we have today.
Uh, I would be open to that, um, amendment, uh, member, uh, um, uh, Satterwhite? I think what I'd like to do first is just go through the minutes and accept the minutes from the last, um, number of meetings, and we can get that out of the way, and then I'm, I'm happy to go to your, uh, your motion, if that's okay with you.
Yes.
So the first, the first, um, uh, piece of our agenda tonight is to accept minutes, uh, and I would, um, recommend that, uh, a motion could be, uh, accepted to accept all of the, uh, minutes from the regular meetings that we have not accepted the minutes in the past, so I'm open to a motion to, uh, accept the minutes from the number of meetings that we've had in the past.
Make a motion, do I have to identify each one?
You make a motion, I think if you make a motion and just, uh, identify those meetings.
Okay, I make a motion to.
On the agenda, that the minutes of those meetings.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes that are stated, uh, on the agenda, uh, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, uh, H, I, uh, as stated.
Motion, motion is made, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, requires a roll call.
Ms. Cassius Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Capola?
Yeah.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gately? Ms. Gately?
Excuse me, Lorraine's having problems, so she's gonna, I told her to just try to call back in.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Satterwhite?
Yes.
And Mayor McGee?
Yes. And, uh, Member Gately has, uh, back on. I can see Member Gately has rejoined us.
Ms. Gately, do you approve the minutes? Ms. Gately? Do you approve the minute?
Vote to approve the minutes.
Yes or no? Yes, 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 thank you. I got it.
Uh, Member Satterwhite? Um, you were in process of making a motion, so your motion's on the floor.
Thank you, I, I'm just making a motion to, um, move from section eight, C and D, to after section five, A and D, so after we do, uh, the elections and appointments by the superintendent, we'll go directly into executive session, uh, with the school committee members, um, and Patrick and Kevin.
There's a motion made to, uh, take up appointments and elections and then go directly to executive session that is scheduled for tonight with, uh, the members of the committee. There's a second? Okay. Uh, roll call required.
Ms. Cassius Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Capola?
Yeah.
Yes.
Ms. Gately? Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
And Mr. Satterwhite?
Yes.
And Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Okay, so, thank you. With that, we'll go right into appointments and elections, uh, and I'd ask, uh, Superintendent Tuttwiler to speak to the first one.
Uh, glad to, Mayor, uh, the first is, uh, for the network administrator, for the Lynn Public Schools, and for those unfamiliar, this is essentially the IT backbone of the district. Uh, thrilled to announce, uh, Mr. Timothy Roach, uh, his appointment to that role. Uh, he's been with the district for a number of years, has been in an acting capacity since January, uh, and has shown us in every way that he's, he's ready to assume the, the role in a permanent, uh, fashion. So I congratulate, uh, Mr. Roach. Uh, would you like for me to move on?
Yes, and we'll all congratulate him as well, thank you. You move on to the next one, please.
Uh, the other is, uh, the appointment for the acting principal role, uh, set to begin on July 1st for English High School. Uh, the name on the agenda is Anastasia Mower, but, uh, she's known to almost everyone as Kessie Mower. Uh, she is a longtime, uh, Lynn, uh, Public Schools educator, she's been in the district more than 25 years, uh, significant period of which was spent at English High School, both, uh, in a teaching and also in a leadership capacity. Uh, I am certain that that community will welcome her back with open arms, and I'm thrilled to announce her appointment as acting principal.
Great, thank you. Um, and with that, uh, we will move on to, um, and congratulations to her and welcome as well. Uh, we will move on to the, um, if, we will move on to the executive session. Um, looking for a motion to, um, leave the session we're in and move to executive session.
Motion to, uh, go into executive session to discuss contract negotiations with non-personnel union, uh, personnel, and to discuss strategy respects to collected bargain for the AFSCME Council 93 Local 1736 and the AFSCME Council 93 Local 3147.
Motion been made?
Second.
Second.
Second, recu, requires a roll call.
Ms. Cassius Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Capola?
Yeah.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Satterwhite?
Yes.
And McGee?
Yes. And in that executive session, we will be joined by Dr. Tuttwiler and Kevin McHugh, and those will, and, and the members of the school committee. Um, I will see you as we connect at the executive session. And for those who that are watching, uh, we will return to this once the executive session has been completed to, um, speak to what happened in the executive session, as well as a return to the agenda and, and complete the agenda as is indicated by the motion by Member Satterwhite. See you all at the executive session.
We exit them and then go?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'm here, yeah.
Uh, okay, um, so, um, motion to, I'm looking for a motion to go back into regular session?
Motion to go back into regular session?
Is there a second?
Second.
Needs a roll call?
Ms. Cassius Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Capola?
Absent.
Ms. Donna?
Absent.
Okay. Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Satterwhite?
Yes.
Yes, and McGee?
Yes.
So, at this point on the agenda, we are, we will be going to ratification of votes taken in the executive session. Um, will a motion, uh, Member Satterwhite?
A motion to, uh, accept the votes, uh, taken with regards to the negotiations with non-union personnel, uh, which included, uh, approving the, uh, contracts for, uh, Deputy Superintendent Powers, the Curriculum Director O'Malley, and the Social Emotional Director Troy, uh, while table and the two additional positions of ELL and Fed Director.
Uh, my understanding, we have to do those individually? Uh, um, is that correct, Attorney Myhouse?
That would be my opinion.
Okay, so let's take them one at a time, uh, we'll take it one motion at a time.
Okay, motion to, um, uh, approve the negotiations with regards to non-union personnel Deputy Superintendent Powers?
There's a motion on the table? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, requires a roll call.
Second.
Ms. Cassius Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Capola?
Absent.
She's here?
She's not here.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yeah.
Mr. Satterwhite?
Yes.
And McGee?
Yes.
Another motion on the table?
Motion to accept, uh, the contract negotiation with non-personnel, uh, Director Curriculum, um, Ms. O'Malley.
Okay, motion is, uh, seconded, we need a roll call.
Ms. Cassius Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Capola? Absent. Mr. Ford?
Not here.
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Gately?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Satterwhite?
Yes.
And McGee?
Yes.
Motion to approve, uh, the nego, uh, contract for non-union personnel, uh, Director of Social and Emotional, uh, Learning, uh, Ms. Troy?
So, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a second, roll call required.
Second.
Ms. Cassius Harris?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Capola? Absent, Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Yes, yes, Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Satterwhite?
Yes.
Yes, and McGee?
Yes. And, uh, I think.
The, the negotiations.
I think we might, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Member Satterwhite, I think we can.
Personnel.
I think we can do those together, the two tabled. Is that correct, Member Myhouse, uh, Attorney Myhouse?
Yes.
Okay, so that, that motion could be for both, both positions on table.
Okay, uh, motion to table, uh, the, uh, contract negotiations for the Special Education Director, uh, Ms. Jamerson, and the, uh, English Language Learning Director, um, Ms. Caldwell.
There's, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call? Roll call required.
Ms. Cassius Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Capola? Absent, Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Satterwhite?
Yes.
Yes, and McGee?
Yes.
And, um, just a point of information, uh, the, the two tabled, uh, contracts discussions, um, we are anticipating a meeting on Tuesday night, we will finalize that and get it posted tomorrow, but we're anticipating a meeting on Tuesday night to revisit, uh, um, those issues. Uh, next, next, uh, there are other, um, orders of business that we did in executive session, Member Satterwhite?
Okay, just a motion to, um, accept the contracts, uh, for the AFSCME Council 93 Local 1736?
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call required.
Okay, and, um, Ms. Cassius Harris? Ms. Ford? Absent, Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson? Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Yes, and Mr. Satterwhite?
Yes.
Yes, and Mayor McGee?
Yes.
And finally. Present for the nurses, so someone else would have to, uh, present that.
Yes. So I'm looking for a member to make a motion on the final, um, um, course of business related to the executive session. Member Nicholson?
Yeah, uh, motion approved, uh, uh, vote taken in executive session, uh, relative to contract negotiations with AFSCME Council 93 Local 3147.
Second?
Second.
There's a second, requires a roll call.
Ms. Cassius Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Capola? Absent, Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Satterwhite? Mr. Satterwhite?
I'm not voting on this.
Okay. And, and, and.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, the, the contracts that were approved are in your emails, um, so whenever you guys are ready to sign those, just go to, uh, to your emails, look at the most recent ones that were sent, because there was an issue with, uh, with Donna. So you probably have three emails from me, I apologize, just, uh, do the most recent ones. And only for Powers, O'Malley, and Troy. And then the, the nurse, as well as the, um, the other local union. So, uh, Jared, you signed the school nurse, you signed Troy, and you signed O'Malley, and you signed Powers. So you're all set, um, Lorraine, you signed nurse, O'Malley, and I just need the other ones from you. Um, John, you signed O'Malley, uh, Troy, I need the other one from you. And Brian, you signed nurse, Troy, O'Malley, uh, I need the 1736 from you. Okay, so we're all set for the school nurse, uh, Donna didn't sign because she wasn't here for the final vote. Um,
What am I, Michael, I want, I miss the, uh, 1736?
I, I have everything for you, I believe, John, I need you to sign Kim Powers, please?
Kim Powers?
Yep. The most recent email you got for Kim Powers. Everyone signed O'Malley, so O'Malley's done. Everyone signed Troy, so Troy is done. Uh, Tom, yeah, the 1736 I, I don't have for you, John, or Lorraine.
Alright, I'm trying to find it.
I can resend if need be.
Please do.
Okay.
Well, I, I, I just, I just, I got it, yeah.
1736.
Yeah, the, the, the document name is 1736 Contract.
Thank you.
So Powers is completely done. So, um, we have Powers. Have most of the 1736 except for John Ford, Lorraine, I got yours.
Thank you.
And school nurse, we're missing Donna, who's not here, and I didn't vote, so that's fine. Patrick?
Yeah.
Um, do you, should I, uh, email these contracts, uh, to the emails, or are you gonna print them out for the individuals?
I'll print them.
Okay. John, do you, do you need me to resend the 1736?
No, I, I, I sent.
I haven't, um.
Did you get mine, I sent it?
Yep, I got yours, Tom. The only one is John.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Send, send me that one again.
Um, but, I'll resend it. I just sent it to you, John. You get anything yet?
No.
We have enough signatures on it, um, but, uh, we can reshare it again. You're gonna get two emails from me now, because I sent it twice.
Let me try. It'll be John, right?
Yep, we're all set. Thank you, guys.
Sorry about that.
Great, thank you all. Ready to go into the next new business? There's a request to use L D T parking lot for pre-race packets. Pickup for the Black Excellence five K on August fifteenth, twenty twenty-one to four P M. Anyone who wants to speak to that, or is it self-explanatory?
Mayor, I can speak to it. I can speak to it quickly. This request comes from Nicole McLean and the Juneteenth Celebration Committee. This is a fundraiser. They typically, well, I don't know the history of the five K. But this time, it's virtual. And they just need a space to set up a table for people to come and pick up their bibs and packet materials. And then they'll run their own five K race and record their time and submit it. But the idea is it's a fundraiser for the Juneteenth Celebration. Just wanted to get the appropriate permission.
Great, thank you. Thank you, and I know that. Yep, there's a motion accepted. I just want to make clear that they're using social distancing and other pieces to make that work. So there's a, yes, Michael?
I believe this is either the second or the third one. I've attended a couple of them before, and it's a great event. I hundred percent support what they're doing, and I'll second the motion to approve.
Great, I think we all feel the same way. They do great work, and it's a great event. There's a motion on the table. Number four has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Requires roll call.
And Mr. Cassianus?
Yes.
Ms. Capola, absent Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Gaby?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Sadaway?
Yes.
Mary McGee? Tom McGee?
Pictures and.
Tom?
Yes? Yes. Yes, I'm sorry, I got something come up on my screen. I gotta clear it up. But yes, I do support the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, great, thank you all. Next on the agenda is an update on learning management system. Dr. Tutwiler?
Yeah, just quickly, I'll ask Jared to queue up the presentation. It's actually a recorded video that's about five or six minutes. You know, I've never made any bones about the fact that we were demonstrably unprepared to go full remote learning in March of this year. But we've taken steps not only to be better prepared to go in a remote learning environment, but also to improve and evolve instruction in the land public schools over the course of the three, the past three months. And a big piece of that involves the mechanism through which you deliver instruction. And, you know, without going too far into detail about what a learning management system is, I'll let the video do that. I'll say that everyone knows that today, the initial guidance on fall reopening was released, and it is required of all districts in the state to submit a plan for remote, for remote learning, should the medical situation in a particular town or city require it. This would be a big piece of our ability to do so. So if I could trouble Jared to hit play, and we can watch and listen, and then happy to answer any questions you have afterward.
Hello, my name is Shannon Danfield. I am a curriculum director. I will be co-presenting today with Christina Capola, the principal of Sheemaker School. We are excited to share our process for the selection of a learning management system for land public schools. What exactly is a learning management system or L M S? A learning management system is an online application to deliver educational courses allowing the learning anytime, from anywhere, in a high level of personalization. The adoption of a learning management system will let public schools directly align with the district strategic plan. An L M S will allow for personalized learning that meets the diverse needs of our student population. Through the L M S, we can further offer some professional development and support around social and emotional learning and advocate training. With the shift to one-to-one devices in grades three through twelve, an L M S fits well with our upcoming technology needs. Finally, the ability to provide a platform for school bond as well as individual communication between schools and families, school strength and partnerships for greater student learning and achievement. We took a look at what systems other schools and institutions and beyond were using. We narrowed it down to these six systems with the best feedback rating. Schoology by Power School, Microsoft three fifty by Teams, Bright Spies by D two L, Canvas by Instruction, Google Classroom by Google, and Blackpool. The process that we followed was to first research all L M S options available and gather sample rubrics. We assembled a team to evaluate the six top choices. We reviewed the overall rubric and developed a rubric specific to our needs at this public school. We attended two days of vendor presentations. Our team met and voted for the top three choices that we would further evaluate. We discussed independent research, some current uses of each L M S, including emails and phone calls to large districts in Nash, Texas, Maryland, and California. We spoke to technology directors, principals, teachers, and parents. We voted our final selection via email based on vendor presentation, team discussions, and independent research. We then presented the team selections to the superintendents. Our team included technology department, data center, administrators, curriculum department, teachers, principals, and a parent. The rubric was developed based on review of multiple evaluation tools for learning management system and feedback from all team members. The final version was provided to each member of the team to fill out both during and following the presentation. In addition, the vendors were asked, were each asked to fill out the rubric. Ease of use was an important consideration when making the decision and examining the different components. We wanted to note that both Google Classroom and Microsoft Teams indicated they are not full learning management systems, but would integrate well with what L M S was chosen. Schoology received the most votes on the team, among the reasons provided by the team for choosing Schoology were a two-way connection to both our student information system, school class, as well as grade book. The teachers, students, and families can access that information in one place. This means Schoology was designed for use in case of fail, and is adaptable from elementary to secondary, as we will see in the screenshots that follow. The included task portal allows for viewing of grades and assignments, as well as needs of communicating with staff. Information pushed out by the system is available in seven languages. Within Schoology, the district is able to offer professional development to staff, including discussion boards. Embedded within the platform is a video conferencing pool based on buttons. Additional benefits include a single sign-on, meaning that students go to one place to access what they need. Assessments can be created within and include technology and the options similar to them. Teachers can tag standards to show progress or master of standards. Finally, all support staff, including C I T, reading, student checking. Parents and parent professionals are able to access physical classes for students based on need. The upcoming slides are a sampling of different grades and user views. An elementary tool organized by subject view. This is a first grade class organized by week. You can see on the sidebar, the task provided for teacher. This is a fourth grade class, again organized by day of the week. Please note the announcement feature at the top that appears for each user. This is a course dashboard at the high school level for the student view. The calendar on the right side allows the students to keep track of upcoming assignments, as well as scheduled meeting. This is within a course view for a high school student. This is a parent view, which is the same as the student view. At the top, please notice that it says you are viewing one student. The calendar on the right side includes specific dates needed for the parent. This is a parent view of their child's enrollment with grade averages displayed. Our next steps will include professional development for principals, teachers, and parent professionals, as well as students and parents. The data center will upload all students and teachers. Teacher teams will build courses within Schoology, and we will work to get all parents enrolled. We are looking forward to the benefits our new L M S will bring to land public schools. Thank you for listening.
Any other input, Dr. Tutwiler, or any questions from the committee?
If I could add two things quickly. So this Schoology is a, is created by Power School. We are a Power School district. And because we already had Power School in that that's the student management system that we use, it's also called e-school. This not only was the top vote getter among the participants of that committee, it is also by far the least expensive. The first year of a three-year relationship with Schoology would be fifty-eight thousand, followed by eighty-seven to two remaining years. We got a significant discount in the first year because we were a Power School district. The other two purveyors of the learning management systems that were finalists, Canvas and Bright Spot. Canvas first year was one oh nine, followed by ninety-five thousand each ensuing year. And not, not Bright Spot, Bright Space. Bright Space was ninety-two, five the first year, followed by seventy-nine and eighty-two thousand for the ensuing year. So it was a top vote getter with the, you know, not knowing the cost, but by the quality, the ease of use, the student friendliness, the parent friendliness, the communication platform that comes part and parcel of it, with the multiple languages that it provides before we even got to the potential cost savings. So we're pretty excited about this. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Member Nicholson. Thank you, doctor.
Uh, thank you, thank you for the presentation, and thank you to the, everyone that worked on this, all the committee. That is a really impressive effort to evaluate some complicated system. Their timeframe, it sounds like it was done exhaustively and really helpful, so thank you, everybody involved. The question I had is, obviously, the, this has been in the works now for a little bit of time. You just got some new guidance today from the state. How do you feel like this, this management system sort of fits into the latest guidance from the state, what they're asking for?
Yeah, I, I, I think it fits perfectly, particularly as it relates to, really, any of the three scenarios that we need to create plans for, right? So just to be clear, the state, the initial guidance calls for schools to be ready for full remote learning in the event of a spike. A hybrid learning scenario where there's some at-home instruction and some in-person instruction. And an in-person instruction following the health requirements scenario, where the expectation is that the vast majority, if not all, students have returned and are receiving instruction in person. This cuts across all three of these sort of pieces of the continuum for the fall return beautifully. I mean, this is something that, you know, you can use in the course of regular instruction in person. And it's something that you can use in a really robust way during the full remote scenario. So it, 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 it's going to be a major, major piece of the work that we're doing, not just with students in terms of instruction, but also in our partnership with families using the communication tools within the learning management system.
Member Castellanos, and then Member Sadaway.
Well, I thank everyone for all the hard work you guys put into that. It's definitely a way to get prepared. And the connection to the district strategic plan, I like that as well. Could you just, so at the end of the presentation for next steps, getting all parents enrolled, what are some of the challenges? I know that there's definitely urgency to get the, obviously, people enrolled, but do we have an engagement plan? Are we going to have teachers, assistant parents? How do we, how do we plan on doing that? I know technology, I know we did put an order, but could we just get a status update in terms of what technology looks like?
Certainly, certainly, certainly. Well, first, as it relates to the L M S, I will say that the integration process is going to be pretty easy because we're working with, you know, a company that we already have a relationship with, that already provides the mechanism, the system that houses all of our student information. So integration is going to be a piece of cake, rather seamless. The onboarding process is going to be a very heavy lift. I know at the end of that presentation, they said, you know, sort of casually, the next steps involve, you know, professional development with staff and getting family and students oriented and acquainted. That, that's a lot of work. And, you know, we're in the early stages of crafting that. I mean, this decision was just made a week and change ago to land on this particular learning management system. But the heavy lift involves, you know, getting everyone oriented and settled in with it. So that, that plan has yet to be crafted. That's the summer's work. But rest assured, in order for this to work, much as you suggest, you know, people have to be familiar. They don't have to know how to access it. They have to know where to get it. It does come with an app that a family can load on their phone, and they can set the notifications to their liking and the language to their liking. But folks have to get oriented to that. So those are plans to be determined, but it's certainly a big piece of the plan. As far as technology goes, you know, I'd say, as I have been over the course of maybe the past month, six weeks or so, we're still engaged in device distribution. At this point, we have a fairly significant number of students on I E Ps who have a device, thirteen hundred of the twenty-nine hundred students on I E Ps. We then pivoted to students who'll be in grades three to five next year, and we've distributed twenty-three hundred of the thirty-seven hundred and fifty students who meet that, who are in that, in those grades. And that process is still ongoing. You know, we've added Saturdays and tried to find ways to make it easier for families to come and pick up the devices. You know, I mentioned before that we have an agreement with Comcast. We're trying, it is really challenging to identify the families who have that need, but we've got a, you know, a very easy way for families to get connected, quote unquote, to the internet at home, free of charge, the bill comes to the land public schools. And we've pivoted to, this will begin in And we've pivoted to, uh, this will begin in short order, handing out flyers when families come pick up the devices that tell them how to, um, uh, the steps to take to get, uh, that internet service if that's something that they need. Uh, so our plan is to have the vast majority, if not all, of the devices distributed before the start of the school year. I mean, we, we really wanna be set, uh, with device distribution i- in September, understanding that, you know, it's gonna be hard to be at one hundred percent, but we really want the vast majority of our students, grades three through twelve, uh, to have a device in hand at the beginning of the school year. Uh, we don't wanna get into a scenario where, and the unfortunate reality of a, of a spike, that now we're also trying to find a way to get devices to people. We wanna be able to pivot really quick, quickly to, from in-person to either hybrid, uh, or full remote, uh, so that it's seamless, uh, quick, seamless, and easy for students and families. So, that's kind of a quick snapshot of where we are.
Thank you. Member Sadowite, then Member Gately.
Thank you. Um, uh, Superintendent, I have a couple of questions. Um, the, wh- what, can you walk us through what it, uh, what it is like for a parent to go pick up this technology? Uh, what's the flexibility, um, or are they located at all the neighborhood, neighborhood schools? What's the, um, communication to let them know that this is available? And then the second question is, what are we doing with the data that we're, um, obtaining from, uh, this technology? Obviously, in a data, uh, world, it requires, uh, us to be, uh, data-driven, which I know we have been, since I've been on the committee and obviously prior to, that, you know, data's been, uh, very important, and I don't wanna lose that, uh, with the technology. So I wanna know, uh, what data are you planning on, uh, retaining? And how is it gonna, um, help us, uh, better, uh, the, the experience for our students and educators?
Yeah, so, uh, with respect to, uh, device retrieval, um, you, you know, I've, I've learned something since I've become superintendent, and, and, you know, I, I think that, uh, I make an effort to communicate to families, but they, they tend to pay more attention to local communication. You know, that coming from either the teacher or the principal of the school that their, uh, student attends. And so the device, communication around the device pickup has been done, uh, almost exclusively, um, through the schools because it's different schools, uh, targeting different days. Remember that we've got sort of limited IT staff who are the ones charged with, uh, the device distribution? And so, um, different schools have different time slots, uh, or different days. We've also established, as I, I just mentioned, a couple of Saturdays where, uh, there were schools that were invited to come in larger numbers to come pick up devices, and that's actually happened with a high degree of success. I think Cobbitt had almost three hundred students come and pick up, uh, a device on, uh, on an identified Saturday. But certainly, if another, you, you know, student who attends Connery, uh, showed up on that day, we have lists, uh, and are keeping really tight, um, uh, account of students who are retrieving devices and those who will, will fit the, either students who are on an IEP or in those target grades. And so, uh, those students wouldn't be turned away necessarily. They would, they would also be able to retrieve a device even if it's not their day. Um, there are central locations, um, for the device pickup, uh, the Lintec Annex, Classical, um, and Marshall. Uh, am I correct on that, Kevin? Just wanna make sure I'm not.
Yes.
Okay. Um, and, and the idea here is, I mean, we're talking thousands of devices, uh, it, it, it just seems sense to make central location, central pickup, uh, the most prudent, uh, and so, um, we invite families to come on, on, on the days that their schools are scheduled, or, and if that doesn't work, we've been extremely flexible, or one of the things, Tim Roach has, you know, delivered devices to people's homes, um, and who, who couldn't make it. So, w- w- we've really been trying to bend over backward to get the devices in the hands of the families, and this is gonna continue throughout the summer. Um, without, uh, with respect to, um, data, um, you, you know, as we look at, um, uh, summer learning plans that I talked about in our last meeting, uh, there's really sort of two buckets here. One is, um, you know, what we would essentially consider credit recovery or summer school. I mean, that's one thing where students are actually taking online, uh, classes through Apex, uh, to recover credits so that they're able to advance to the next grade. That's for grades, um, uh, six through eleven, um, or students current from last year, grade six to eleven. Um, with, with respect to, uh, elementary level, um, as I mentioned in our last meeting, we've partnered with, uh, ST Math, um, which is a, um, you know, a, a really engaging online math program through which there can, there can be data, uh, generated, uh, around competencies that students are, uh, demonstrating, um, through participation. We're not mandating that. And so, the, the, this, this program is, as well as, um, the secondary program, which will come online in July, when those devices are distributed to, on the secondary levels, called IXL. Um, we can look at that data, but we're not mandating that students, this is, uh, on the enrichment side of things. Um, certainly, when we look ahead to the fall, the learning management system will be able to, will, it, that will be a much more robust, uh, data gathering, uh, mechanism because students can, you know, upload their assignments, uh, on, completed assignments on the learning management system. They can get feedback, um, they can take assessments, uh, you know, it's a much more robust, uh, scenario for us to, you know, pinpoint where we are in terms of student learning at any given point.
Thank you. Member Gately.
Um, Dr. Tuttweiler, I couldn't hear you when you said the initial cost for this year. Was it fifty-eight thousand?
Si- fifty-eight, five eight.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And then the following years were?
Eighty-seven.
All right.
The discount comes in the, in the first year because we're, uh, we already, um, own a, a, a module of their service. Uh, but keep in mind that that was, I'm just doing quick math here, fifty thousand dollars cheaper than Canvas and, uh, you know, around forty thousand dollars cheaper than Bright Space, the other top, um, you know, top three finalists for the learning management systems.
Okay. I was very pleased to see that, um, you came up with a, a choice, um, through voting and a survey and, um, that we have this learning management system. Um, what I need to know is your next step, because, um, as you know, I do bump into teachers and primarily on the high school level, and, um, some teachers are really very, very nervous about using, uh, LMS, um, how much professional development I'm gonna be able to give? And have you reconsidered using Salem State Collaborative? Because I took that qu- course for Google Tools, and it was very helpful. And I think it would be very helpful for a lot of these people that are having a hard time figuring out what, or how to use an LMS. I, I just think it would be useful, and they've knocked the price down quite a bit. I think it's down to two thousand from what I'm hearing.
Mm-hmm. So, but, but, but. I'm sorry, go ahead.
You know, all the professional development to all these teachers in, in.
Yep. So, that's, that's, that's the golden question. Uh, a- and bear in mind that, um, you know, there are many things that draw us out of bed, uh, in the middle of the night, uh, that, that, that's, that's one of them. How in the world are we going to, uh, acquaint, uh, all of our teachers with, uh, a new device? Because remember, we, we purchased, uh, laptops for, uh, all staff. Um, or how are we, how in the world are we going to acquaint, uh, all staff with, uh, a brand-new learning management system? Although ease of use was a, um, was a pretty high-ranking criterion, uh, among the, uh, criteria that they used to select. And the feedback, I think our neighbor's right next door in Salem used Schoology. Um, feedback was really good about, you know, the ease of use, how easy it is to just sort of get in there and figure it out. Um, but, but that's a, that's a big question, uh, around professional development for the LMS. But also remember that there's gonna need to be significant professional development around, um, how we do schools, uh, you know, come September, uh, the health and safety operations, the new protocols, the new, I mean, it, it, if you look at the initial guidance, I mean, it's, there's a lot of learning that we have to do, and, um, you know, at a certain point, people become saturated. We're also thinking, you know, a, a, a big thing for us is gonna be the extent to which teachers are, 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 are ready to, uh, and are prepared for, uh, the kinds of trauma that students have experienced while out of school and what that's gonna look like and how that's gonna present in the classroom and what sort of strategies they can leverage to effectively meet those students' needs. So, there, there, there's a lot that we need to learn, uh, to be ready for next year. Again, you know, we're, we're gonna be thoughtful and strategic around our professional development planning. I mean, we've, this is something we've been talking about since, you know, April or May, you know, when we knew that, like, geez, you know, we look to reopen, that there's so many things that are gonna be different, so many things that we're gonna have to, um, develop our staff around. And so, um, next step for us, uh, i- i- is really, um, being very thoughtful and methodical around the first step, uh, which is how do we effectively reintroduce, you know, seventeen, almost seventeen thousand students to in-person instruction come, come the fall? So, I mean, I, I, you know, as this evolves, the professional development plan, I'll, I'll happily share, but I'd say we, we are very much at the beginning of that. Identifying the tools, uh, is a big piece, and now sort of adding shape, you know, knowing what the initial reopening guidance is, adding shape to the, the, the learning needs of the adults is next. But that, that, that's gonna take a little while to put together.
Deputy Superintendent, yeah, Rogero, I think you have a point, and then we'll go back to, um, Member Gately. Yep, you're muted.
It's not.
Can't get on.
Why don't I go, and then she can go, and she's.
Go ahead, Member Gately.
Well, I just am really like, I'm telling you, because somebody just drove by my house and stopped to visit me unexpectedly, and she's really having anxiety with the possibility of remote, having to teach in the fall remotely. So, this professional development is, is really, really, really important because a lot of people are not computer-stable in our district. All right, I just hope you know that.
Uh, yep, yep, we- well aware of that, and, and I would say, um, y- you know, again, it has been a, a, a prominent blip on our radar, um, but it's kind of hard to, you know, proceed with laying out specifically what the professional development is before we know what the tools are, before we know what the guidance is. Um, it's starting to come together, so now we can, we can go faster.
Okay, so if you need me help, you can call me.
Okay.
Other, uh, other thoughts or questions? Uh, Deputy Superintendent Rogero, are you, uh, able to speak? I see you're back.
You can type it in the chat box if you want. If the mic's not working. Sorry.
Yep, we're, uh, we're all taking it day by day here, for sure. Um, any other questions? Uh, yes, uh, Deputy Superintendent Powers.
I have Shannon Ban- Banfield vigorously texting me just to let you know, to address some of, uh, Lorraine's concerns in terms of Schoology. Um, just letting you know that we have an implementation specialist assigned to us to work through all of that, helping us to develop that PD plan. Um, we are planning to use, uh, train the trainer model, so we'll be training multiple teachers. We're gonna do it across the district. We want our people to be experts in this and to feel comfortable and to have in-house people in every school. Um, so it really will be a very elaborate plan put in place, Lorraine, to address the PD needs of our teachers. We, we know there's a lot of anxiety out there, and a whole team is being put together to think about how we're going to do this and how we're gonna implement the learning management system. We don't, we're not taking that lightly at all in terms of the professional development needs of people.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Shannon.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Other questions? Great. Well, thank you, Dr. Tuttweiler, and I think the final, um, piece on the agenda tonight is your, um, communication. We're ready to talk for that.
You're ready for that? Okay, well, I'm, I'm ready to share it, and, and some of it, uh, I've already shared. Uh, it was related to the, uh, related to the release of the guidance, uh, and just the, the, the work that we're gearing up to do. Uh, we've got, uh, a leadership team meeting, uh, tomorrow morning at eight, at eight-thirty. Uh, communications have gone out. I haven't seen, uh, my letter go to the, to the families on the website. I'll have to check on that before I get off, get off the phone. But communication with all staff, um, the report is out, and people are getting familiar. We're starting in earnest, uh, tomorrow morning. Um, but I, I just wanna be clear that for us, I don't see that as the start of the work. I see it as a continuation, uh, of the work. Uh, the other, other thing that I wanted to add, uh, just a couple of other things here quickly. Uh, we did administer a family survey, which closed this past Monday. Uh, I wanna pay, publicly thank the nearly twenty-five hundred families who responded. Admittedly, this is not the sample size we sought. Uh, nonetheless, there are some interesting, high-level takeaways, none of which should come as a surprise. Uh, by virtue of the responses, we know that remote learning, uh, as we experienced it from March to June, um, is re- is extremely difficult. Uh, we know that families are seeking increased academic support for their students, uh, and we know that there are concerns about, uh, physically returning to school. Um, should not come as a surprise. Uh, again, with a respondent size equal to roughly fifteen percent of the student population, uh, I wanna be careful not to generalize the responses to the other eighty-five percent. That said, uh, we always learn from the feedback and definitely learn from this survey administration. Needless to say, we have much to do in the coming weeks. Um, typically, this meeting, uh, is the final one for the school committee, and then meetings resume again in the fall. Uh, at a minimum, we will need to schedule meetings in August to review and approve the FY twenty-one budget further. Uh, DESI has come out and established August eighteenth as the deadline to submit, uh, the Student Opportunity Act plans. Uh, so I, I think it, it would be prudent for us to meet occasionally during the summer to review and, where necessary, approve matters related to the fall reopening. Um, last but certainly not least, it's my pleasure to share that we received the Early College Designation with Salem State University. This is part and parcel of the deepening relationship with the university. This will no doubt expand early college opportunities for our high school students, uh, but also put them on a path for college completion, as the research clearly indicates. This is a big deal. That's all I have.
Thank you, uh, I see Member Sadowite, Member Nicholson, and then Member Castellanos.
Uh, Patrick, thank you, uh, for that, that update. I just, um, have, uh, two. Can't read out to me. Um, her daughter had sent, uh, an email to that webs, uh, that email address she created for student input. She's a recent graduate of Classical. Uh-huh. And, uh, she sent it maybe weeks ago. So she was, uh, her mother reached out to see if there were gonna be any responses to the input. Um, and I, I, I told her I, I would ask, um, but, um, you know, wh- what I think is, i- is an issue right now is that we're dealing with the COVID-nineteen issue. Um, and, and addition to that, we have the social ju- uh, justice movement. Um, and with that, um, you know, people wanna be heard, but we're also limited to personnel, and we have these, uh, deadlines. We have to meet, uh, with DESI and, and prepare for the upcoming school year. But I think that there needs to be some sort of balance. And I also think that in the near future, just depending on the way that, uh, things are happening in our state, um, I don't know if you're aware that, uh, the mayor of, um, Boston just, uh, created a position for equity and inclusion, inclusion. will eventually have someone that can, uh, you know, listen and, and, and work with them with regards to inclusion and equity, which we already know is a part of our district strategic plan, uh, but you know, it's, 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 it's definitely in the forefront of things. So not only do you have to deal with COVID, um, we also have the, the social justice movement, which is, is equally important. And um, I just want to know what you're doing to balance the two and what should, what students and parents expect with regards to emailing you with their experience in public schools and what do you have planned uh for something like what the mayor said with the equity and inclusion position?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that question. Um, I was uh pretty good about responding to all of the messages and it, it, at varying degrees, sometimes it was, thank you for sharing your story and I'll take that to heart and other times it was a more substantive response. So maybe we can, um, actually, I'm sitting at my desk right now, I just opened it and I see some from this week that I have not responded to, but I don't know how long ago. I will double check, maybe we can talk offline about that.
You sent me, so I'll forward it back to you just so you'll have it.
Okay, okay. Um, I set up that email address, LPSlistens@linschools.org on purpose, uh, so that folks would have a constructive way to share their experiences and uh I make sure that I read them, uh, and I do respond. So let's, I'll, I'll, I appreciate you forwarding it again. Uh, with respect to moving forward, um, I mean, it, part of, part of my response to that is, we already, we, we had a plan, uh, and have a plan in place. Uh, and that comes out of listening intently to students' experiences, to staff's experiences, to parents' experiences, uh, and to interacting with our community partners about where the Linn Public Schools is and where it needs to go for the development of our strategic plan. Um, and you know, the outcomes of that, uh, I, I think fit really nicely with the national and global conversation happening right now around uh race and equity. Uh, so our first step last year, uh, the year that just expired was, you know, we're not, we're not going to be able to lead change in the Linn Public Schools unless the leadership has engaged in these conversations and has, you know, done a deep dive around looking at data and understanding why that data looks the way that it does, um, understanding microaggressions, understanding history. Um, we've done that work this year in partnership with our um consultant from Chicago, Matthew Rodriguez. Uh, we, we officially defined it as like sharpening our equity lens. That work's not over. Uh, and mind you, we continued that work through the closure via Zoom. We had our last meeting with Matthew uh two weeks ago. Um, we, we, we had a plan hashed uh for next year around professional development uh for the leadership, that's going to tweak a little bit, but the, the professional development plan for all staff uh around meeting the needs of English learners uh this coming year is deeply anchored in uh race and equity. Um, this was already, this uh professional development plan was, uh, the framework of it was built back in January before all this happened. Um, so there was already an effort uh in place to address many of the concerns that were expressed to us through the development of our strategic plan. I'd also say, um, as is referenced in our, um, the uh resolution that the school committee courageously adopted, um, you know, we'd already, in, in my goals, there was a uh, an explicit uh effort to uh increase the racial diversity of the staff in the Linn Public Schools by one percent each year. Now, we, we got sort of knocked off our rocker, so to speak, uh, this year and, um, but part of that plan that is continuing is providing um, uh, intel test prep for and licensure support for our paraprofessionals or for our teachers of color who are on waivers. That has continued uh remotely. Uh, so, so, you know, I mean, I'm happy to put something together more formally, um, but, but I would say there are formal plans that already exist uh in our strategic plan that we're continuing with uh and, and, and uh with all sincerity. Uh, with respect to the position, believe it or not, there, there is, there is a position that holds that title, uh Equity Director, uh already existing in the Linn Public Schools, but it's not the kind of position that the mayor in Boston created. It's um the Parent Information Center Director position actually carries that title. Um, that's something for us to think about. I mean, right now, we're getting support from someone on the outside, but to have someone who lives and who makes this their professional home and who's here every day and can, you know, lead professional development, uh, and, you know, engage with leadership and staff uh around the topic, um, I mean, there's, there's, that's a conversation to be had.
Perfect. And if you can definitely put, you know, there's so many pieces of the puzzle that aren't necessarily next to each other, so if you could put together something just so the public knows that, you know, we're listening, um, and, and, and we do have plans in place, um, that, that would be, would be good because like you said, we do have bits and pieces already in place, it's just not, not all put together.
Sure.
Thank you.
Member Nicholson, then Member Castellanos.
Thank you. Um, so I was just going to make a request that uh we resume uh post-student superintendent reports on the website. I think those are really helpful and um actually kind of similar to what Member Sadaway just said, it's, it, there's, there's good information coming out, it's nice to have a central um place to be able to, to show what we're working on, um, particularly some of what you talked about tonight with regard to the technology and how to get access to the technology. It's a question that I feel like I get a lot and it's, it's helpful to be able to uh, to those ideas that you gave tonight.
Uh, this uh report that I just referenced and read pieces of uh is in superintendent report uh form, uh, and will be on the website tomorrow.
Terrific, thank you.
Great. Member Castellanos? You're uh, you're muted. Uh, Brian?
So, um, Dr. Tewiler, thank you so much for your communication. I just have a question about, um, we recently received, um, obviously the communication and governance, I know we, we're going to be partnering up to discuss um plans and what ways can we just have a little bit of attention just at that? I know you're assembling this focus group, could you just kind of expand on that just so people can see and hear what we're trying to do?
Yeah, certainly. So, um, and this was in a memo that I sent to staff and the families a few weeks ago. Um, but, but, but the, essentially, um, it's funny that I discussed, we're talking about the strategic plan, uh, I reassembled our um inclusive planning group, which is comprised of uh a number of our community partners, uh, some elected officials, parents, uh, and then I also included or invited um, uh, my student advisory group to participate. And, and I, I intend this group to essentially be a sounding board, right? You know, so I, I can survey people to pieces, um, but this is a, a, a very formal and accessible way to get uh feedback of our plans are evolving and emerging. It's also a place for idea generation. Um, you know, that, that group uh did an amazing job, um, contributing in a, in a significant way to the development of the strategic plan. Um, it, it just seemed prudent to reassemble that group to uh, to, to continue the work uh at, you know, what is probably one of the more challenging times in the history of the Linn Public Schools. And so, um, at a high level, I would say it's a, it's a, it's a sounding board, but it's also a, a place where ideas around, you know, what's the best way to communicate, you know, this idea, this challenge or this piece? Um, and here's one way that we're thinking about um reintroducing students to in-person instruction. Give me some feedback on that from the standpoint of, you know, from the perspective of students, from the perspective of parents, from the perspective of people who spend time with um our, our, our students after school. Uh, I see this as being a really valuable piece of the, the work ahead and um, uh, I'm excited about our first meeting on Tuesday.
Yeah, no, I, I was just wanting to just point out that the intent to be inclusive was very apparent during the strategic planning process and just to see it come back, obviously it's, I, I, I'm really excited for that to start as well. Also wanted to just uh point out, um, she'll, President Sheila O'Neill, she shared uh that the Linn Teachers Union, Linn Teachers Union has formed a racial and social justice committee, uh, and they plan on meeting this summer, and I think that's wonderful. Thank you, Sheila, for sharing that with us.
Mm-hmm. Great, thank you. Other comments? Um, thank you, Dr. Tewiler.
No, no problem.
No other, no other um, um, agenda items around the agenda? Member Sadaway?
I can motion to adjourn.
For a second. All those in favor say aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much. Have a good night.